The mailbox is in rural area, so it is probably a good idea to have a box.
Yeah. Especially now at Christmas, when there's packages and stuff from Christmas packages and that. People.
It's hard to keep a mailbox at my place. Too much traffic.
Hard to keep a mailbox with a cover on.
Yeah.
The cover seems to walk off routinely.
Get all your routines of vinyl cats in it or your cord? You didn't have any cord, did you?
No, I didn't have any cord.
Pretty swampy out there right now.
It sure is.
I don't know if we get down now.
Freeze is harder than nothing, huh?
Yeah.
Yes.
If it's about 10 degrees, probably okay.
I'm going to approve the minutes from November 30th, 2018.
Say it.
There are no further discussion, all those papers out.
Aye.
There's a letter on the rates on the auditor.
Is this from the auditing firm that sent in the proposal?
Yes, that's the proposal. That's requesting the rates and that's the...
Yeah, but they, it didn't, it doesn't say how many estimated hours. It just says fees per level of employee per hour.
I don't know if they know exactly how many hours it's gonna be.
I don't think that they put the number of hours many, if any, into it because you never know if you're going to be required to do another federal audit if you have funds in excess of a certain dollar amount and you're required to do a single audit on those funds.
Oh, I understand that no one has magical predicting abilities, but like Eric Otting, when we asked him to engage with us, he gave us at least a dollar figure and he said depend, you know, it's this much per hour and I'm thinking it'll take so many hours and this is the total. And I think, you know, we just need to solicit for some bids.
I think it's a little, I think if you want to do that next year, that's fine. We're up close first of the year to be soliciting bids.
I'm sure there are people that want business any time of the year. You told me that last year too, because I said about wanting to bid out the audit auditing firm because you guys have been using the one, same one for a very, very long time. We can at least get bids on hourly rates and compare hourly rates if they're not going to give us an estimated total. I moved to solicit bids to employ the auditing firm and auditing firm, excuse me, for the 2018 audit.
I have a motion to solicit bids for auditing firm to audit second. Motion dies for audit second. I would move to employ and bird level Pierce Ferris charter for auditing work for Lincoln County 2019.
Say it.
There are no further discussion?
Yes, the two discussion points that I would like in the minutes are, one, why are we not soliciting bids for this when it's a large cost to the county and it's a yearly cost?
There are no further discussion?
And number two, I'm waiting for Dawn to make sure she got that. Did you catch that, Dawn? Okay, and number two is, why is the county continuing to employ the same auditor year after year without soliciting bids? What, what is the reason? Those are my two points of discussion on that motion.
There are no further discussion, all those papers out.
Aye.
Aye.
May. I'd like the minutes to reflect that there was no response to my questions.
I think it's been discussed several times. I don't think you answered any difference this time.
You said the same thing last year that you just said this year, which is, oh, we can do that next year because we're too late.
You better think of it earlier in the year, I guess.
What kind of response is that?
What kind of question is that? Same question you asked, I don't know how many times it's been discussed. I haven't changed my position on it, so...
I would only say that in my discussions with other commissioners and my involvement in other entities, when audit firms had to disband it and bids were sought out, that it was difficult to find a reliable audit firm to do what you want them to do and do what they're expected to do. I think several of the county commissioners that I am acquainted with went through this process a few years ago and very few of them were satisfied with the results of their search, that they really wished they would have continued with their auditing firm that they were familiar with and the auditing firm was familiar with the activities of that county. So I would not at this time, until I see a problem with our audit firm, defer to seek another audit firm.
So what I'm hearing you say is that familiarity and comfortability with an auditing firm and this governmental entity is the priority, not cost or potential even support for economic capitalism and...
My experience with that, there is very little difference in the prices of audits and oftentimes companies will bid low and to get the business, but it is a bad result of that. And so I am very hesitant to, to change audit firms that I am comfortable with and that has served this county well.
I'm interested, you said your experience, yet every time I've asked, as Mr. Finch pointed out, that I've asked several times, you say that you've never tried another firm. So how do you know what that, how are you saying you have that experience when the majority...
I believe I just explained to you that I have been involved with other county commissioners that have gone through this process and they have not been very satisfied with their results.
How many commissioners is that and what counties are they from? Because I've driven...
Dickinson, Morris, Republic, I believe was the other one. Maybe Washington, I don't remember. Juvenile Detention Center also went through a soliciting audit firms and the one that after we chose that we found that there was severe problems with that firm, but we were able to work through those.
Well, I just, you know, I find it interesting, we exempt ourselves from standard accounting principles of GAAP so that we can just claim on a cash basis for the audit, which is, I mean, you're not asking for anything over the moon there. And other than that, it's basically a rerun. I mean, we went through everything with the auditor as far as setting up the line items with the budget. We never got a detailed analysis of anything and he actually just caught a few things that were wrong for several years. So what you're saying is he's been here for several years, we're not comfortable changing until we find something wrong, but yet this year, for example, he told us to close the account, that we had an open extra checking account with the Register of Deeds office and that shouldn't be set up that way. And he's had several years to catch that and we just found that out this year. So your comfortability and familiarity doesn't necessarily resound with someone who's efficient and staying on top of those types of things, yet repeatedly gets hired and contracted out without a total amount given, no estimated hours and no competitive bids. Makes me very sad.
You know what we paid them, Dawn?
Did you ask me something?
What's up?
Did you ask me something?
Yeah, I was wondering if you're out there, what we paid them last year.
Sorry, I was crunching with the time. Oh, I don't have access to that.
Okay.
But I can go look.
That's not necessary.
Do we have any other correspondence? This is an invoice from Waddles Heating and Cooling out of Salina for Lincoln Park Manor, $1,077.26. I don't know what this means. Greetac, P-T-A-C.
Heating and Cooling Unit.
Well, that's the company that does heating and cooling. I don't know what a, what that particularly means.
P-TAC is a heating wall unit in the assisted living part of the, they use P-TACs.
That's a new unit?
They're a combination, heating and cooling unit.
So that's ordering a new one?
Yes. I'm not sure, there may be some more in the facility, but I know the ones in the assisted living are P-TACs.
That's it?
Follow-up letter from the attorney on that block pit.
To the Board of County Commissioners, on October 30th, 2018, our office sent a letter to you regarding the termination of gravel agreement Lincoln County previously had with the Block Family Venture, owners of the described real estate. To date, I have not received a reply and this was on November 16th. Did we just open this now?
Yeah. I think they're about done out there. I know we wrote them a check. We paid them Friday, some money for the remainder of the materials in the pit, so...
Did their last letter ask for us to confirm that or did it just said to close it, right? So we, so Michael hasn't been out there?
Yeah, yeah, they've, I think they've got everything hauled out. There's still a dozer sitting there, I think.
I have the last letter.
I think it was just a notification that it was terminated and that there should be closure and then I know that we notified the department head and he said they had already worked on it some, right?
We're, they were in the table.
So we need to make sure to send them a letter that we're done, if we're done.
Yeah, I'll give it to Michael and have him. I know there's still a dozer sitting there.
This is to advise you and then should you have any questions, please contact our office, so... I guess we need to ask him to make sure he sends them a letter when they're done and ask him when they'll be done.
I don't know what that is. To dress the girls, so make sure that...
These are seminars. These are also good, decent seminars that are not necessarily county government related, but...
Marilyn, heard anything from Marilyn?
I have not. I think what she was wanting to know is whether could you support out for President's Day activities, legislative one? I'm not sure it did end on President's Day weekend, but it was a weekend.
Well, David, let's go ahead and take care of you and if she comes, you can take yours off.
Sorry, you all this morning. Thank you, Dad.
Yes, sir.
Fine, how are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I find it easiest that, that when I come before you guys, that I have prepared statement and make copies for you and that if you have any questions, you can ask me when I get done. And again, I'll just read from my statement. On October 8th, we had the workshop with law enforcement officers coming over and speaking in the morning and then in the afternoon, Ladonna Reiner, along with her staff and Katie Gardner from Lincoln County Hospital and myself, completed the Stop the Bleed training in the afternoon with the Highway Department, courthouse staff attending the training. Since the, since that time, 33 Stop Kit, Stop the Bleed Kits were acquired from, for the Lincoln County, Lincoln Emergency Planning Committee through the County Attorney's Diversion Agreement Fund. Twenty of those kits were dispersed to the Highway Department, 10 went to the courthouse, one to the Health Department, one to the transfer station and one in my possession. On October 24th, there was a North Central KEMA tabletop exercise in Audra County called County Fair Chaos. On October 27th, the LEPC had the zombie event in Vesper with 47 registered adults and 43 registered children in attendance. There were bicycles given away and adult items also given away. The bicycles were given by the Bank of Tuskegee, Bennetton State Bank and the Citizen State Bank. On October 29th and 30th, I attended the G290 Public Information Officer Class and October 31st, I attended the G291 Joint Information System Class in Salina. On November 9th, USD 299 Sylvan Lucas Unified Staff and Administration were trained in Stop the Bleed Program. This again was conducted by Ladonna Reiner, her staff, Katie Gardner from the hospital and myself. On November 16th, I attended the Healthcare Coalition Meeting in Salina as I am an appointed representative from the North Central KEMA region. There is a water filtration system that is housed at Salina Regional for the North Central Region. We had just-in-time training on the unit, on how to set it up and how to make it operate. The system with filtered pond water, excuse me, the system will filter pond water up to 99.9% pure at a rate of 60 gallons per minute. North Central Healthcare Coalition had purchased Stop the Bleed Kits and these were distributed and I currently have them in my office. And each county from the HCC got eight kits. And again, everybody within the county, I shouldn't say everybody, but oh, the Department of Six Upper, the Sheriff's Office had previously received the kits. November 19th through the 21st, I moved my office and I'm now officially in the basement. I turned my keys into dawn on the 26th. I've had some minor connectivity problems and I've had calls with Nextech IT support to this date. I think the problem has been resolved. November 27th, I attended the North Central Homeland Security Council Meeting in Boyd. FY15 funding is closed. FY16 funding paid for All Hazards Incident Management Team members for reimbursement to go to the National Conference at Hilton Head, South Carolina. I'm a member of that team, but I didn't find it pertinent that I attend that conference, so I did not apply before you folks. FY17 funding for the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center project purchased another 340 Stop the Bleed Kits for law enforcement officers. FY16, there will be funding left over on the generator slash light tower project and this will go toward portable message boards to counties that agree that they would like to utilize them. The message boards funding will carry over into FY18 also. There was a presentation from Gail Bartley, the Emergency Manager, and Sheriff Don Jacobs from Jewell County and discussion was had about the active shooter event in August in Jewell County. There was discussion about future training opportunities and continuity planning that needs to occur at our local jurisdictions to assist with the hardening of dispatch centers. Swap and Saha with K-DOWN gave a presentation about the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant program and advised that in, it is an 80-20 grant, the grant cycle will be coming out in December. In the past, the grant has been a one-year cycle, but the grant coming out in 2020 will be a three-year grant. The state EOC was activated for that blizzard on Sunday, November 25th, but Lincoln County dispatch or, or there were no accidents that were paged out on I-70. I know power was out in the Beverly and West Wall area for a while, but I never received any calls from the Sheriff's Office that, that anybody was needing assistance. Saturday, March 23rd, Lincoln County is hosting a full-scale exercise through a hazardous material emergency preparedness grant. We have had two planning meetings with the first one being October 23rd and the second one being November 26th. With the exercise, there will be a hazmat identified chemical being towed that will have an accident with the school bus and will compromise the passengers on the bus. The hospital, nursing home, law enforcement and USD 299 will be testing some core capabilities. And with this, there will be local response from fire, EMS, regional hazmat team from Salina, the CERT team, Community Emergency Response Team, law enforcement and possibly Salina Mounted Patrol. With the transportation of the patients on scene after decontamination, they will be transported to LCH. With this, I have spoken to the Emergency Manager from Ellsworth and Russell County, Keith Hager, and asked him if, if we could have a unit and a crew from each of the county respond to our training event that day. The Emergency Manager advised me that he had spoken to the Emergency EMS Directors from each county and they had advised that they would send an ambulance and a crew over for the training. I am laying the groundwork for this exercise to happen as I am ensuring that I will have the resources available to plan and then exercise. There's an MGT 314 course offered in College Station, Texas. I attached that information to the back of your paperwork or it's the, the section after my draft that, that is offered in College Station, Texas, that trains individuals in Incident Management Structure, ICS. The course is a three and a half day course, 28 hours and is funded by the Department of Homeland Security, DHS. I have enclosed training information for you to look at. I would request that you allow department heads that have the training up to the G300 course level to be available to attend this training as county employees would have the opportunity to receive this invaluable training experience that is directly transferability onto the incident management team, Incident Command, Post Staff or Emergency Operations Center in preparation for an actual large-scale incident. Participants will learn by examining the effects of their decisions while working in an Incident Command post setting used in a national, notional jurisdiction. Participant eligibility includes emergency responders, supervisors, managers from the disciplines or services, law enforcement, emergency medical services, emergency management, fire service, hazardous material, public works, government administrative, public safety communication, healthcare, public health and other county, state and federal agency personnel who may respond in support of a local jurisdiction. Topics that are trained down there, decision-making, principles of incident management and unified command, overview of the staff command system, incident command system, organizing and staffing for unified command, resource management and incident management strategies, incident action plan development, practical application of the incident response planning process, ICS documentation overview, training simulations, tools overview and the CBRNE and All Hazards Computer Driven Tabletop Exercises. This course is normally three and a half days, 28 hours, beginning on a Tuesday and concluding at noon on Friday. This training is funded by DHS, FEMA, National Training and Educational Division. NER RTC arranges and provides all travel, lodging and per diem for participants. Upon confirmation of course registration, NER RTC will provide information for travel and participants may require. I would request that you allow me to pursue this training for department heads of the agencies in Lincoln County represented by the Treasurer's Office, Leanne Bishop as Finance Officer, myself as a Logistics Officer, Public Works would be Michael O'Hare and that would be reference to Operations Position, County Clerk's Office, Don Harlow for the Planning Section, Steve Granzow, and again, he's not a county employee, as a Public Information Officer, Tammy Kurt as a Liaison Officer, Ladonna Reiner as a Safety Officer, Dustin Florence from Law Enforcement. Resolution 2005-14 designation of the National Incident Management System, NIMS, as the Incident Management System is to be used for planning, responding, recovery and mitigating for both natural and man-made disasters within Lincoln County was adopted July 5th of 2005. This training opportunity is based on the resolution that would give all the departments and people listed above to learn, practice and convey in a no-fault controlled environment that would benefit the infrastructure of Lincoln County. And then again, the next section is, is the resolution that I just quoted. Then the third section of that is the MGT 314 class. And then the, next to the last page is the training dates that they have available through 2019 and that's from January 14th through the 18th through December 2nd through the 6th of 2019. Again, elected public officials are invited to come to this training also. One of the mandated requirements though is that you must have the G300 level training. The two per, the two current positions that do not, that I am aware of are Under Sheriff Florence and Leanne Bishop, the Treasurer, and I've sent both them information as to upcoming training by K-DOWN that will be put on in Hutchinson on January 8th and 9th. So I'm trying to accommodate them and to get that training, again, if we're allowed to do this.
Do you feel like that's the closest that this training is going to be?
At this time, yes. At this time, and again, funded by Department of Homeland Security, yes, correct.
Have you visited with others that are interested in doing it?
Um, I spoke to law enforcement, spoke to the hospitals, spoke to Mr. Granzow, spoke to Public Works, spoke to the Health Department, have spoken a little bit to fire chiefs as ultimately they would be Incident Command if, if there was a grass fire, a big fire like over at the lake, they'd be, they'd be IC for that event. And, and there's interest within the fire chiefs and I know all the chiefs or assistant chiefs have had the ICS 300 and 400 class when Rodney used to be here. Now, I had not had the opportunity to speak to Dawn, but at the last exercise that we did, she was one of the Incident Command staff as the logistics, I think is what your title was. But you did a good job that day.
Supposed to. I mean, I remember what I did.
Right, right. You slept since then, I understand.
I guess I'd like to know how many of them are actually interested in going here.
And again, we're having our LEPC meeting the last Monday of January and this was talked about at the last meeting. Again, I could, I could get more confirmation or get some better numbers. And again, trying to get a date solidified to where everybody could go, that might be the problem too, or if I had to divide it up into two groups... the problem too, or if I had to divide it up into two groups, that would be beneficial also. And that would lay the groundwork to setting up Incident Command with knowledge of everybody.
Am I correct in that they are providing compensation for people going down?
Compensation. The Department of Homeland Security will pay for the airline tickets, the lodging, and then the per diem rate, similar to like when I went out to Colorado.
But are we paying that as a workday, or do they have to use one of their, some of their off time?
What's that?
I said, I think the question for our expense is then, are we paying them as a workday, or are they going to be required to use their own time?
Well, I assume if they do it like they do when David goes, they're going to reimburse us for wages and...
It just says travel, lodging, and per diem.
But again, if they're going as a county representative, as a department head, wouldn't you knowingly pay them for a workday?
I don't know, you didn't request that. I'm just wondering, you have quite a list there, what, like eight people?
Right, right, yes.
I'm just wondering, from my view of training, which I believe in training, how much training are these people getting in their own departments that is, you know, for their own beneficial use on a daily basis versus attending something that's meant more for emergency management, EMS, that kind of, and the, I'm sure the Sheriff's Office...
But again, in the Incident Command structure, you're going to need a Finance Officer, which would be our county treasurer. Again, in previous documentation that I'd seen, Dawn's name came up as a Logistics Officer. There's other positions, Tammy Kurth came up as a Liaison Officer.
No, no, I'm not discrediting what you're saying as far as the structure, I'm just saying, how much money are we putting into current training for their current jobs that they actually use versus the hypothetical training for something that may or may not happen? That's all I'm saying. I want to compare how much money we're putting into their training, period, for their own purposes.
For their own training as far as, as...
I'm not sure, I mean, I know Dawn has mentioned several times that it's hard for her to get to go to a training every year because of either time constraints or monetary constraints. And that's for her own office.
There's training for me also, that I don't have the time constraints or the monetary things to go.
You've gone to several trainings every year.
Yes, I have. But again, I'm trying to bring that information back to the county. Again, in the presentation to the county, though...
Last time I asked you about bringing the information back to the county, though, what you told me is that you're not authorized and you don't have certification to present the information back. So I understand, now you're trying to take people along with you, I get that. My question is, where are we at as a county as far as investing in the training that, you know, we all take in our own departments versus now intercombining training, cross-training, I'll call it, that's the more proper term?
But with the NIMS complacency, the resolution that was signed in 2015, Lincoln County is supposed to be NIMS compliant, which everybody, everybody including commissioners should have the 100 and 700, but then that was opted out to cover by the 402, the elected official training, which is supposed to be offered next year at the KAC conference, is what I was told, is a pre-conference event. So again, that 402 class would cancel out the 100 and the 700. I've asked you to do the 100 and 700, and I've yet to see a certificate. But yet, I gave you your state credential that allows you to get into a scene in the event of an emergency. And again, you know, holding people accountable, how do you hold them accountable? Do I have the jurisdictional ability or accessibility to cover other department heads and what they do or what they don't do? And again, I've asked, I've asked that the ICS 100 and 700, the online courses, be completed as a pre-employment position, responsibility, after they do their drug test or their fitness test that they have to do now, do that through that process, and then that person would not be taking up time sitting there with their, with their department head when, when they should be out learning whatever they got hired for.
In my personal position, I don't see it my job to personally go and physically interfere with any kind of scene like that. I'm sitting here looking at the finances, that's what I've been hired and elected to do. So, I understand your concern that you want everybody knowledgeable and everyone aware that would be hypothetically involved in this scenario. I'm looking at the overall cost of what we've put into emergency management over the last, what, two decades versus what the output is, the cost versus the actual output. And I'm not devaluing its validity, but there's a certain time when you need to put constraints on the expenses, and that's why I'm saying this cross-training idea, it's not a bad idea. What I'm saying is, how much have we already focused on inter, internal training versus cross-training? I don't know that that makes sense to me financially, is what I'm saying.
The cross-training is funded by Department of Homeland Security, whether we go or not, those seats are taken, it doesn't matter. I'm just trying to educate and have everybody on the same page. Again, you can send me to all the trainings you want or that I'm allowed to go to, and I can bring that information back. Do everybody, does everybody always attend meetings?
Let me give you an example, let me give you an example.
Does everybody always attend meetings?
You attempted to set up...
I'm talking, can you give me a moment? I can attend all these meetings, I can bring the training back, but do all these department heads always come to these meetings? Corley Fire Chiefs, the LEPC?
Probably not.
And why not? They're appointed by the commissioners, where's the accountability? There's people within the county that are appointed by you that do not participate. Why? And that's not my, I can't go, "By God, you need to be here because the commissioner's appointed you." That's not my place, that's back on you.
Well, I'm glad you're bringing that to the table, but this is the first you've brought a complaint to the table. But what I'm explaining to you financially is that you have to, that's where my perspective comes in. If you have people that don't want to participate, but that's their field of work and their duty, that needs to be discussed, and it hasn't been discussed. So that would be a legitimate concern that you have, I understand that. Financially, you're asking us to make a decision that I would just like to see the comparison there as to what kind of training we've done in internal departments. I mean, we had a lot of confusion earlier this year just in our own taxing system. You know, I think if we can't properly figure out the tax structure within our own courthouse, that would be, take priority over a hypothetical scenario, which we do respond to things regularly that are small. You're talking about, I mean, these people train for the World Trade Center, what did it say?
There's different training capabilities, yes.
Yeah, Hurricane could train, yeah, so, I'm saying, but that's what they're for, I mean, it's very, very large scale, I get it.
Or the tornado that wipes out half the county or...
Or floating.
Floating.
Again, there's different things that could happen, yes. And again, we can, we cannot be prepared, that's fine, I don't care. But, again, if we have the opportunity to send these people into no-fault win-win situation...
But what you just said is they won't come to the regular meeting here, but now you're going to entice them by going somewhere else. I mean, that's basically what you're saying. You're providing them an opportunity to go get the training because you're putting it with a carrot. So I understand. But you also came to us for the first time with a complaint today while you're presenting that.
Okay.
So, that should probably be explored, the complaint.
I think probably the ones that are interested in going to do respond to those things. I think the ones that don't won't be interested in going to the training, so I think, like I say, I'd like to know how many are interested in going.
Okay, and I can find that information out, and I can report back on that. Anything else for me?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
I want to cut it. They moved the file on cabinet, wasn't that was there?
I don't think it needs to be quite that long, I'd tie a big log in it and get it up.
You know that file on cabinet sat there, so, it's just, it's not any shorter, but it feels awkward over there. Okay, so Marilyn Helmer apparently called, we gave DeeDee the Commissioner telephone line. It just seemed like the easiest to have them swap over, so apparently Marilyn did call you guys. And it rings, and we can't answer in, like, if she would get a Commissioner phone, she can send it to us, but, or call as an... And then there's the information about the audit, so, total paid budget audit.
If I remember right, that firm in Hayes wanted $25,000 to do a full audit of the senior centers and the Council on Aging, so that kind of gives you a comparison cost to... 29,000 to do all of our auditing work versus 25,000 just to do a one-time audit on three very small entities.
Well, maybe they didn't want to get involved. I said, maybe they didn't want to get involved. It wasn't really, you know, an enticing scenario to make money. What is this, what does this budget mean?
That's when they need to prepare the budget, so it's a, it's a long drawn-out process, but not just meeting with you guys, but then they get all of the department heads' budgets in, and then they do go out...
But you subtracted that amount.
Well, I'm just pointing out, that's the dollar amount for the budgets.
Oh, I'm sorry, you went right to left, I'm looking left, right.
I thought that they just sent us bills, I didn't realize they sent us a specific bill for budget, so I thought they would, they basically sent us a bill three times per year, and I thought it was just for their time.
So they're billing separately to do the budget?
Yes.
So they can do the audit and not do the budget, and that would be the difference there, to prepare the budget, is that for, well, $3,390?
And of course, they use information out of the audit to help prepare the budget, so...
Okay, so we're requested to open the courthouse February 16th for Lincoln County reenactment.
I don't have any problem with, brings people to town. Been going on for about 20 years, most of it, I think.
There's no February on there. I moved to approve use of the county courthouse on February 16th, 2019, for Lincoln County reenactment. Isn't there something days, isn't it?
What's that?
Don't they call it Lincoln Days, or what?
Yeah.
They used to.
Well, she wrote reenactment, so I'll just use that.
It's been called reenactment.
For Lincoln County reenactment, okay.
I'll second the motion. There's no better discussion, always better to argue.
Aye.
She seconded that, I'm sorry.
I do.
So who comes to take care of that? Dawn, do you do that?
Uh, no, John Paul.
He'll come.
That's a, some training certificates that we give the Highway Department guys to pass out to their employees, completed training certificates for K-Work, Workless Training and Defensive Driving, I believe it was. Yeah, you got something there for us?
Just information, no action item whatsoever. About last spring, you asked if I would find out more information on different agencies. It's taken a while, but we've got it, we've got the information back, and I have packets for you. I thought what would, how it would go is I could pass it out, you guys could read it, and I'll be on the agenda next week, and then if you have questions for them, I'd be able to respond to them. The second, the second item is, you know, in the hiring of a new area coordinator, or whether there should even be an area coordinator, has become an issue or a discussion of advertising and things, and we have, back in September, I gave some information to the Council on Aging, which, I don't know, whatever was questioned, and so they questioned, I had them talk to Karen Mays, who is the Senior Opportunities and Community Services Supervisor, and she responded in a letter to the person who was writing, and he brought it to the board, which is public information now, so I have a copy of that letter that you see. It's in regards to the conflict of interest from, for the site manager and for taking a position of area coordinator. It also has that people can't, who can and who should be able to report at council meetings, and the conflict of interest defined by Manhattan. And I thought it was, if nothing else, great reading. And if you have questions from...
Thank you.
Yes, the Friendship Meals, just to let you know. And I'm representing the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging from, for Lincoln County. So I attended the meetings, attended all the meetings, and the last one was on November 20th at Council of Kansas. And so we discussed a little bit, I had a chance for about 15 minutes to meet with Karen, and discussed a little bit, and she provided a letter that she sent for the information on that. And we have goals, which I'll discuss at the next meeting, if that's okay, to be on the agenda for the next time, and what that would mean for seniors. The first document is real important, it defines that the, sometimes we hear out in the bout that the senior, or the Friendship Program, or the Friendship Meals is a program provided by the Lincoln Senior Center. That's just not true. It stands separate, it's from Manhattan, it's paid full from Manhattan. There's, and I believe that the meal levying money is to provide program funding for seniors, so it's not providing monies for the meal program. And I think at the last meeting, a council meeting, Rose, who's another representative, made clear that the Friendship Meals can be taken anywhere where there is a full kitchen and a 501(c)(3). It doesn't have to be at a senior center. And that some things need to be shaped up, if this is a better word to say, of how things are flowing and how things are determined. Even this morning, I gave some information back to Al Joe, some rumors are floating around, and the hope is, as you'll read in that first letter from Karen, that communication is an issue in Lincoln County, and that it get taken, be considered anyway, of being a more structured way to present your information to the county. So, breeze read and all of that.
Well, I do, I would like to just reiterate on some of that. The Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, North Central Flint Hills Area Agency...
It's old. Yeah, I can never remember. I just call it the 18th Board, but that's, but that's separate, we sit over them.
Aging in the Flint Hills should only really have any primary authority or jurisdiction over the Friendship Meals itself.
That's right.
Just because the Senior Center decided to facilitate that program does not mean that they report to and/or have any other responsibility outside of the meal program to that agency. I think that's been one of the biggest...
And that's what we're trying to clarify.
Right, that's been one of the biggest confusions, because the Board, the LCCA Board of Lincoln County, has continually thought that they were under the purview of that agency, and they have a representative coming to the LCCA meetings, not that I'm against attending the meetings, just saying, when they come, it's, they're solicited for advice on our internal county's operations, which is not, I mean, that's not how it's supposed to be set up.
And that is answered in the letter too, because she had...
Okay. And I find that very interesting, because I had this conversation with Karen Mays several years ago, and she was not on this side of the fence. I think the turnover there...
Well, yes, and I think that's why I'm here to present that to you.
Right, it's a new concept.
Because it's taken a lot of my lobbying, if you will, of trying to present that. I, my thing is to see all three entities, or maybe if it even remains three entities, begin to work together for all seniors in the county and not for any separate entity. Again, there's, you do not have to hire, and there's no pre-process to hire an area coordinator. Some of those, as you have seen in Sylvan, you had a wonderful turnout for the Schick Program, which was all provided by volunteers, and I think they're going to have another one because it was so well-attended and they didn't have enough time. There's one this week in Lincoln. It's just getting the communication out that these things can be provided and what they can provide.
And that there are other resources, we don't have to provide everything internally with our own tax dollars.
That is correct, and that's the reason for explaining those other agencies and what they can provide to you.
And that's what I had reiterated to the council, you know, before some of the internal problems started on the Board there that are just recent, I mean, they've had issues with that Board, but I had brought back to this council that...
We're still having some issues with that Board.
Right, right. I had met with Karen's actual supervisor, and then she had put me in touch with the Salina Office, and they do provide those things and/or help facilitate them through other areas to get wherever the final destination may be.
The problem is, is as you get older, and I can testify because I'm older, it's hard to give information over the phone, and a lot of time, and you can call a toll-free number...
It's nice to have someone right there.
And it's really good to be eye contact, one-on-one person. But that training is provided, and we can...
And mileage reimbursed for those people who do it.
And we have Schick trainers in this county.
Yes.
And maybe that needs to be tapped in and looked at and having some...
Well, that was always a justification used for having that job.
Exactly.
And especially having it full-time.
I understand.
And...
And it was nice, it was nice for the people, they got used to that, and they, but on the other hand, they maybe, if they didn't provide, they weren't aware of all the other kind of agencies that can provide services which are free.
Right.
I mean, the agency has that, and they train people to come out and do that.
Well, it's already state and federal funded, basically.
Yes, it is.
So we don't need to triple...
The meal program is federally funded, you're not paying for it at all here.
With local taxes, and we're not paying for it, but yes.
No, in the long run, in one way or the other. But thank you for doing that, because now that I'm old, I appreciate it much more. So that's trying to clarify, you know, that it's, a lot of times I will hear, "Oh, but Lincoln provides a program of the meals," and you just want to clarify that that's out of Manhattan. And it can be in a, wherever there's... And it can be in a, wherever there is a kitchen that can apply for it. And there can be other startup senior programs to request money for meal levy money. Whoever can provide a senior program, which is different than an activity. You know, it's not that you should probably be providing to play cards or whatever. Those are things that can come as activities. A program is really an educational, not necessarily a training, but something that will benefit all seniors in Lincoln County.
I think what you're touching on though is some of what we've discussed prior. And we did ask, we did motion and approve to ask Jennifer O'Hara to provide an opinion.
Yes.
Internally on what the meal levy is set up to do because we have an original charter resolution that is not found as far as having the paperwork on it.
I think in two thousand and eight, she was asked to do, to define how the procedures would, from what I read in minutes. I wasn't sitting here and all that. But from what I understand, at that time, the area coordinator asked the commissioners to provide direction on how to proceed with funding and just policy. And I don't know whatever came of that. I can't follow through the minutes as I'm trying out.
We don't have any actual paperwork attached to that meal levy. So it is at the full discretion of the board to distribute it to whichever entity they deem fit. And I think the debacle that's been happening at the LCCA for quite a few years deems them unfit, at least temporarily, until something changes and they have a new structure and they've provided some sort of legitimate. I mean, they have enough money saved up that they can revamp themselves. They don't need our money to do, to restructure themselves.
And, you know, I think that at one time, you commissioners talked about freezing money and things like this until things got there. And, you know, you may have put in, I will tell you this.
We haven't even distributed the last payment, right?
Well, we still.
We, we distributed half of twenty four thousand.
We did some directly to the senior center.
Right, but I mean, I'm saying of what we withheld of twenty-four thousand something odd, I think we still have twelve left in this year's budget.
We have not. We didn't get the last distribution except for the funds that we gave to the senior center directly.
That's what I thought.
And the charter, for whatever reason, and all the definitions is to provide senior programs. It does not say to provide to senior centers. So that, you know, to, to get that issue, like, maybe there needs to be some refiguring of how that all comes down.
I don't think there's any doubt there's going to be.
And the question on there that may be confusing in that letter is the advertising that went for refilling an area coordinator position. And from, speaking from Manhattan, would prefer not to have happen what happened there.
Right, is it, they, they, they're basically, who is, this is Karen. She's basically saying that LCCA has not received a resignation from the former employee. They just not, they just stopped coming.
Problem as much as they went ahead and advertised for things without knowing what the pay, what the hours. So you're relieving one person, but not setting up what you want for another person. And that, you know, you usually don't advertise for a position without knowing how many hours, what the pay will be, what the duties will be and.
Yeah, they didn't definitively, yeah.
They did not do that. And that's, you know, there's some legal issues entwined in all of that. It's starting with a resignation, of course. So wherever that goes is somebody else's problem. I'm just reporting it as the middle person here. So if you have questions, read, you know, investigate, research, and I'll try to answer the best questions I can next week on it. If that's all right with you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry it took so long. I, I wanted not to be the person just saying what somebody said.
No, it's good to see from Karen that she's proactive there.
To say Cindy said either. And I enjoy doing that. It's wonderful to go to the other senior centers and just as a little thing to add, most of the senior centers end up with, in the eighteen county area, end up with five hundred to twelve hundred dollars at the end of their year. And they count on fundraising, not necessarily no everybody just let you out. Anyway, next. Good morning.
Morning, Michael.
Good morning.
What is the Lincoln County Highway Department email? Okay, thank you.
I hope the bridge crew didn't have anything in the channel on the stone bridge.
Not in the channel, but it's holding them up from driving piling right now.
Oh, bet it is. I haven't been out there today, but it was.
It's coming down. Yeah, it's coming down, thankfully. They did last week get the south abutment drove and they were hoping to do the south set of piers starting today and then get moved around to the other side and start working that abutment and pier there also. Of course, they're going to be delayed a little bit on that, but I think, I think the water will come down in the next few days here allow for them to continue here. We do have some of the guys out doing some damage assessments and doing some gravel recovery. We had numerous places in the far northwest part of the county where it did go over the road with this last rain. We have a crew out trying to get some snow fence put up. It's, I think froze just enough that we're going to be able to get some of it up. I think there's going to be a few places that we might not be able to get it up at all this year, but we'll try to get it done in as many places as we can.
I think we're supposed to have some colder nights this week.
Yeah, tonight and into tomorrow, but by noon, rest of the week, I think it's supposed to get up above freezing and things will start thawing out pretty quick again, I think. I do have a preliminary gravel report for what we've hauled this year. It looks like on our list, we still have two inactive pits. The block gravel pit, we are in the process of getting that closed.
Do you know when that'll be done?
What's that?
The block pit. How long do you think it's going to take to finish it?
As far as the work that we have to do in it, as soon as it dries out enough, we got a area, I don't know, three times the size of this room that needs smoothed out and that's about it.
We got a letter from.
Yeah, the attorney.
Yeah, you guys can show that to me and I'd.
No, there's a second.
We got a new one.
They're just saying they didn't receive a response, but they didn't honestly ask for, here's, this is the new one. That's the first one. That's, this is the most recent. Now they're asking for a response. So I thought if you're going to be finished relatively shortly, we could wait until we're done and send them, say we're done.
I think a telephone call is appropriate immediately today.
During.
To this turn, okay.
Call them and tell them that we're working on it.
Letting them know we're.
Think that is, that's.
Yes, I had met with some of the family members last week onsite and we discussed some stuff there, so.
Well, this was December, or November sixteenth, so that's good if you've talked to them since.
Yeah, that would have been prior to you meeting with them.
Yeah.
That may.
But I agree. If, if you just give them a phone call and say that once the weather dries out, you only need a couple, you know.
Yeah, I'll be sure and tell them that you met with the family members.
I don't believe one is mailed to you, so.
We didn't meet last week except for end of the month meeting, so we just opened that. It's dated, I think, sixteenth.
Yeah, that's what it said.
You can take those if you like. So you've got the phone number and stuff.
Okay.
Dawn probably needs to keep them though.
No, that's fine. I.
I mean, a co, you know.
That's fine. You guys can keep them.
Do you have, do you have a county cell phone?
No.
Okay. I'm just going to email you these pictures then. And before you go on, if I might just share with you, there have been some concerns on one twentieth. And I know you, someone had already talked about it a couple of weeks ago, but basically we've got some holes developing alongside the road. That one goes out to where there's a culvert end broken off.
Okay.
And, I mean, this is not the first time. I mean, there's, I think there's a problem with the shaping there. This is a hole right into the field. Can you kind of see where that goes in? You can look at them closely in the email. But basically some sinkholes, if you want to call them that, are developing on the edges. I think there's not, in certain, on certain parts of that road especially, there's not a good crown. And I don't know what needs done, maybe some rock on some of those, of course, maybe the one especially with the culvert. But there's some shaping issues, I think, on that stretch.
You guys are welcome to look at this. I'll try to get something more formal put together for you.
I think the thing that we need to know is which pits have been inactive this year that we have not built any gravel out of because I think we were kind of in agreement that we would pay the difference of that commercial tax.
The only active pit that we did not haul out of this year was Keeler. And we're just at the very end of finishing up that pit, but we do have some piled there yet. There are a few that we did not get a lot hauled out of. We tried to get some here a couple of weeks ago and it's just too wet. Didn't lay down at all and it's just going to be a problem all through the winter for sure. But, you know, the Shaw gravel pit, we ended up getting a hundred cubic yards out of that and Sidman's eighty. And everybody else had pretty substantial in there, I'd say.
Yeah, if you get something put together there, because like Al just said, I think we need to compensate a little bit.
I also have on my calendar to remind you today, but I forgot to add it in, that you guys had discussed changing the gravel prices beginning in two thousand nineteen. So I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that more.
I think that, didn't we talk about doing that when the contracts were in March when they all come due?
Yes.
I think that's when, otherwise we'll have to do another.
Agreement with each.
Agreement with them.
I think they.
They're all on March thirty first.
Regardless of the.
I believe, yeah, thirty first.
What'd you say, Dawn?
I said, I think the new contract said, I think if you increase the price, that there wouldn't be any contract to be about. Didn't you make that modification?
I would have to review it again. I think it might have. If, if the contract was changed throughout the year or before their termination date, but yeah. We do have some that go more than one year. You know, gravel is still a constant issue with us. The quality and the volume has definitely changed over the years. I will let you know that we did haul, it looks like four thousand three hundred and fifty tons of quartzite, one-inch rhinestone. And I think that would equate around just shy of forty-five thousand dollars, so. It, it's an option. I don't know.
You said it did come out to about forty-five thousand?
I believe it's just shy of forty-five thousand dollars.
And that comes out of the gravel line item in your budget?
Yes. So I know that constantly searching for options and locations for gravel and see if we can try to find some better product and try to save us as much money as we can. If not, I guess we'll just have to resort to more rock, I guess. And then last meeting, we discussed the purchase of those trucks, purchasing three and eliminating five others. And you guys wanted to see what some expenses on those trucks were. And between those five trucks, we ran a queue on the last three years of expenses and we had a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars worth of expenses on those five trucks. And one of the plow trucks was a little over sixteen thousand dollars. Other plow truck was a little over ten thousand. The newest ninety-three Mack truck was nineteen thousand dollars. Both of the other trucks, there's an eighty-nine that we spent a little over fifty-two thousand on. And then the nineteen ninety, we spent forty-seven thousand on that one, so.
How much of that is routine maintenance?
I don't have that exactly broke out of there. That was total expense on it. Of course, the plow trucks are going to have very little. I think they probably get serviced once, maybe twice a year. Now the gravel trucks that are running, yeah, they're going to have a little bit more miles and stuff put on, so. Yes, there is some routine maintenance that is included in that.
And that was a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty, three years of maintenance for five trucks. What was the price of the new trucks that you were proposing, the total?
It looked like around one hundred and sixty.
Times three.
Three, correct.
Those are coming with warranties.
Yes, sir. And plows and spreaders. You know, it's just not a bare truck. It would be a multi-use vehicle.
I'd also like to know what the, what that maintenance projection would be per year. I mean, the maintenance costs. Are any of these going to be have to taken out of, out of house?
For service? I would hope not. While they're under warranty and everything, outside of the service, then there shouldn't be any expenses on it.
Well, three of those are going to be spreader. They're going to pack, they can use a spreader to, or snow plows or.
Plow and snow trap.
Have you looked at any older models than brand new?
I have not yet. I have not had time.
That might be something worth doing.
Is that the government discount with that, with that government discount?
Yeah, and, and like I said, I've only checked at one place at the moment. And that was mainly so I could get a chance to go down and look at one. Ellsworth County just recently purchased one. I just have not had time to make it down there to look, so. I do know that right now we are operating on one plow truck, which limits us greatly to get over when it does snow, but.
What's the difference between using the plow truck for snow versus using the plow and the grader?
The main two differences are, is with motor graders, you have what I call set down pressure. And if you're not careful, you can damage your highway a lot easier with a motor grader. And not only that, it takes the motor grader away from being able to go out and get on their other roads, the gravel roads quicker. And we do not have the ability to put salt and sand down with a motor grader either.
And they're about thirty mile an hour difference probably plowing.
Yeah, can be. You know, it depends on the conditions.
Does each grader have a plow or are they sharing one between the route?
No, each, each motor grader has a plow. And, you know, and the plow only has to be utilized typically when there's drifting. If it's a six-inch snow that lays flat, you know, the, the moldboard under the motor grader will be able to take care of that snow no problem.
So are you only using the plow trucks on the highway, on the paving highway?
Yes, they only get used on blacktops. I believe here's.
Who's operating it or them?
Truck drivers.
Not one specific one does plowing? Or if you only have one truck running.
Yeah, one specific person typically runs that truck. It's kind of been assigned to them since the beginning, so. We usually send them out with two people in it, be able to run a spotter because you are traveling at a speed a little bit quicker than ten, fifteen mile an hour.
That's all I have for you guys this week.
We've got a, where did they go? Over there. I assume you want to pass those out from K work on some certification. I assume you want to pass those out from K work on some certification for work with training and defensive driving.
Yes. That would be perfect. Excellent.
Those five trucks, do they all have any? Does anyone have significant value? I guess maybe I should ask it then.
What do you call significant?
Well, I mean, somebody that would probably want to buy them, the one, I'm sure it's not running now. I'm sure it doesn't have much value because it's probably got some prob, major problems. Most of those had major problems, haven't they?
I looked through everything. There's been something major that's been replaced on about everything. You know, some of them had an engine, some of them had transmissions, some's had the rear ends gone through, you know, it's just a... I, I hate to use the term, but you know, they come to a point where they're ticking time bomb. I mean, I've worked here for what, eighteen, seventeen years now and we had those trucks when I started here and, you know, they were Ellis County's trade-ins, so. I mean, we've got a lot of good use out of them and they've more than paid for themselves.
I guess you think the five have a value of at least one new one?
I'd hate to throw myself under the bus, but I don't think, not, not quite that much. If we could work it out, I, I would love to, if we did do the trade, be able to save the was it the ninety-five Mack and convert it back into a tractor? So we'd have an additional tractor to pull the low boy with and whatnot when the other ones are hauling gravel. We used to have an additional truck at one point and we have since sold and never replaced it, but. As for the spots on one twentieth road, I know there's a couple of issues there that need taking care of. We tried to get those done when we did the CDBG grant for the projects further on south and they would not allow us to include them in that project, but they will be, to get fixed properly, they will be some sizable projects that I think we'll have to look at potentially some alternative funding or another CDBG style funding for.
For the sinkholes? That I just showed you or?
Well, I didn't get a good look at those. I don't know where those locations were exactly, but I know first two cuts south of the first road there, south of Vesper.
There is a already I read this week that there is going to be some money appropriated for rural infrastructure. You know, it was not a large amount of money, but there was some money there that, since that is a major north-south route in the county, might, I don't know whether Tanner or Kirk and Michael was aware of that, what that program's coming up, but that might be a place that we could find some funding. I mean, we've been very successful at doing that once in a while and some major problems, the Beverly Barnard Road. That problem was solved. We just happened to be ready.
That was an oral project?
Yes. So, you know, I think I, I guess I would say that we need to look long-term at that road, not patch. I think it needs to be a long-term process where it is well done, yes.
Even if you can't get to it right away, do at least put a sign up so people don't run off the road. My mom is ninety-one. She drove that road and I swear that woman was white as a sheet when she got home. She said if I'd have missed some, if I would have met somebody, I would have got over, I'd have been down in the morning. And there's two places there.
I'll have to do some thinking to even know what I could sign it with.
I mean, if you could put one of those white flag things or something to let people know.
Just so they know that it's.
That there is holes there.
That is, that, that's dangerous when you don't know they're there. Extremely dangerous.
Well, and I, you probably didn't see it. They're not small. I mean, they're, they're into the roadway. The concave part.
You know, and I know that funding options will vary because that is a federally ended road, so.
What are you looking for funding for? The materials to buy some rock for base? What?
It's mainly going to be materials and equipment and labor, everything, you know.
Reconstruction.
That it basically will be reconstruction because right now the slopes are straight up and down. That's the way it was designed in the twenties, thirties, whenever it was built. And we need to do like we did further south and bring in thousands of cubic yards of dirt and put it on a three to one, four to one slope. You're dealing with right-of-way, fence, all of that to be able to get it back to the way that we build roads now. You know, and what's the standard practice today? You know, when it was built and designed back then, that was standards.
So who do we have that can design that project out and give us an overview of it?
On cost?
Both strategically and costly.
Tanner could do all that for us.
I guess we need to be real careful too because with the amount of moisture we've had this fall, that ground's going to start moving. That's, in those areas, that's what happens is that ground starts moving and we have all this rain, we have slides.
Slabs.
Like they do in California, except ours don't go quite as well.
Well, some of the problem too is where you don't have the proper shaping on top of the road. You get that ledge and you get into the sod that holds the water along the side of the road and then you get that any kind of motion from the water drain off into a particular area because it's kind of been sitting alongside the road and then all drains in one low spot. Then you really get erosion. So without a crown and without getting rid of those ledges on the sides, you're not going to solve the, the problem ever. I mean, that's got to be, I don't know if that's a training issue. I don't know if it's a, an individual route issue. I see it certain places more than others. I would think that would be up to your department to address that in a specific way.
You have anything else for me or?
What do I do? No, I just want to thank the guys for getting out and taking care of this snow as well as they did on the blizzard, I think. Some of the guys I know come out on Sunday and put up a couple of paths for
They did, I was.
The highway. Appreciate it.
All of you guys did come in at a bare minimum, at least got their machines ready for the, the next day. There was a few that I gave permission to take their graders home with them. That way they would ensure that they would be able to get to work. And in the process, they were able to open roads.
Yeah, we had a complete blockage on our road and
There was.
Yep, they, they came out and at least got that cleared off and.
There are several miles of dirt roads right now that we could not get opened, you know, they were no way.
That's going to happen, right.
It was, didn't freeze underneath and it's just uncommon weather for us right now.
Yep.
What looks to be a trend for the season.
Yeah, it's fourteen inches of snow already, I believe they said.
That's for sure, so. Alrighty, well, you all have a wonderful week and I will see you next week.
Alright, thank you, Michael. Jennifer?
Yep. I have some information that I need to share. I've been in executive session for trying to have privilege. Dealing with Lincoln Park matter. Our personnel. Fifteen minutes to begin. So moved?
I'll second. We're not for a discussion, I'll just say aye.
I have a college visit with my son in the afternoon. I need to leave, so motion days have been stacked, it seems like. I'm usually there all morning. So if we came in earlier and did it earlier at like eight or eighty thirty, I might get management. Really, I need to get Mr. Hay on the phone.
I could come in earlier.
Okay, and my question is then you don't have a scheduled meeting with anyone at this stage?
No, I double-checked last week and sent an email letting him know that there was just a couple of days. I just couldn't move like the ten things that were on. And he hadn't heard back yet, so I'll double-check again with him, but no. I tried to make myself available, but I just want to let you guys know that stuff, so let me get, let me get to cracking on the stuff that we talked about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Don?
No.
I think we need to, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve both fall on a Monday. We usually close at noon on New Year's Eve, don't we?
Didn't we do this the other day?
Uh, yeah.
You weren't here.
Oh.
Well, did we do, I think we just did Christmas.
Well, you guys did Christmas. Normally the courthouse closes to the public at noon on Christmas Eve. I think that there's some confusion though about some of the departments because Amy had sent out an email to the, I didn't get it, but to the departments that said that you guys granted four hours and then if anybody needed, wanted off, that they could use the other four hours. So one department specifically asked what if every employee would like to use their leave time to account for the other day, for the other four hours and be closed on Monday? Could they be closed on Monday? And I told them technically with you guys only granting four hours of holiday time, I felt like you were saying that we needed to be open till noon. Or four hours of our department's time. I mean, am I incorrect in that mannerism?
I think that's up to the department head. If they can close their department, that's one thing, the other departments can't.
If part of the county's open and the whole county has to be open, in my opinion, all departments have to be on work. I don't think that we can let.
But that would be like, I mean, if Tammy's her own entity, elected official, if she takes her own leave time to just not come in that day and she knows she's getting the four hours because that was granted, I don't think we have any say over that.
She has somebody to cover for her. I mean, someone will cover for her.
She's an elected employee. She doesn't have leave time anymore.
Um, the question came from the highway department. They had every employee say they wanted to be off except for one. And so the question is, is are they, should they be open? Should they not be open? Do they tell the one, "I'm sorry, but you have to
You have to cover this.
Be off if everybody else says that they don't want to work or do they make the one employee come in and and run the department, which is basically sitting there for four hours? I, I told them that I felt like they'd be open. I mean, I thought that's kind of what would be was decided was that the courthouse would be open till noon, so.
I think the intent was to work half a day when we made that motion.
That's what our department usually does.
Work half a day.
Just work half a day and then I usually stay.
Well, and ultimately.
In the afternoon.
Yeah, you can't make it fair across the board because the sheriff's office isn't going to close and EMS isn't going to close, so it's not going to be equal for everyone. And if you're an elected official.
They want to use that time to move. If the weather is decent. Some departments start earlier, so probably the highway department, if they start at seven, then their end time's going to be at eleven. So. That's what I thought. If there's anything different, let me know, but the courthouse will be closed.
Well, where's the specific question coming from with department?
Well, when Joe mentioned, what are they going to, going to do, I just thought, I, I told the department head that they needed to be open after. Whether it's one employee that runs it or all of them.
Yeah, let them decide. The department, the department head can decide.
That's, I mean, so I guess is that, is that okay for me to say that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it may be just that they're there to answer the phone.
Yeah.
But if there is a major problem, I mean.
Well, they'll have to call people in.
Yeah, yeah, they'll have to call people in. I mean, if we have a snowstorm, they're going to have to come in. That's all there is to it. Probably on Sunday, but I, I think that if we've decided, if you've decided to, and I'm not against a half a day, I think every department is open a half a day.
We only did Christmas. Do we need to do?
Uh, New Year's Eve, we close to the public at noon, but we're still here after noon, so it's not like.
That's close, that's a book.
Okay. So you don't need any kind of motion for that? You're just going to close the courthouse off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do it until Monday.
Thank you.